All right, this call may be for the order stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So just a couple of note keeping items before we get started. Do you want to connect that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so Councilmember Michael Rosi. Oh, Roksha, can you mute your mic?
I can unmute you if you would like.
Can you mute your mic?
Yes, I can unmute.
Yes, can you unmute?
Oh, pardon me.
Okay, there we have it. Did you turn your volume down?
No, turn your volume down.
We've done this twice in, I think, the entire time I've been here. Yeah.
We've done it a few times.
Yeah, so just a few note keeping items. So Councilmember Roksha Michael Rosi, she's joining us tonight via tele, remote teleconferencing. During the pandemic, we had a different way of doing this, which was a little bit easier. You know, after the pandemic, we had something in place where we basically have to, you may have seen the notice, we have to notice the location of where the board member is, and the public is allowed to join that person, and then we have to, there's a couple other steps that we have to do. I think this is the second time we've done it this way. During the pandemic, it was a lot easier because we were just able to use Zoom and have our meetings remote. But when the emergency orders expired, so did that ability. So this is our second time we've had to do this. So she'll be joining us. And then we also have, welcome Major Michael Sims and his local government class. They're here tonight, they're in the back, you can see them in uniform back there, so, you know, welcome. Okay, so first up, we have the approval of minutes for the September 10th, 2024 work session and special meeting. The September 17th, 2024 regular meeting and the September 30th, 2024 special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second. Mr. McGarty.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Ms. Edelman Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi. Yes. Mr. Wodzowski.
Yes. Okay, so we have a series of public hearings tonight. Let's get started with the continuation of the NEMA unsafe buildings proceeding, fire hydrant meeting. I believe we have someone here tonight from NEMA. If you just want, I believe that we were supposed to find out whether or not, I guess, the status of the part that was coming in and whether or not you were going to have it in time, and if not, would you be amenable to just, you know, replacing the entire hydrant?
William Olson, with York Military Academy. We are getting a new fire hydrant. We're not going to get the part, the fire hydrant will be in within 20 days.
Okay. That is good news. Do any of the board members have any questions? I think that was the main concern, is that we didn't want to wait, you know, weeks and weeks and months to wait for the part to come in, and we had asked them to see if they could order it. So I guess we'll check back. You know, that's plenty of time between the next meeting, so I think we'll know whether or not you've received the hydrant before the next meeting.
I noticed this, actually, that's a stupid question, but if you don't mind me asking, where are you getting a hydrant from? Is it from the United States or is it from Canada? The reason why I ask that is there's different threads. And the fire service in the United States is what's called N S T, National Standard Thread. And if you get hydrants from Canada, they use I P, which is iron pipe, and no connection will hook up to that hydrant. There's any fire problem with the United States.
I'm not sure.
So just make sure, make sure to note that the, the spinning side at two and a half and the steamer, which is four and a half, has to be N S T, National Standard Thread.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? No?
Alan, I just asked Mr. Vincent if he did receive any kind of written notification or any updates, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you have not.
I also do not work today.
That's right, you just showed up.
Okay, so.
Well, we were saying three days, and I think we would say.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we did.
As of when I left Friday, nothing.
Nothing was available. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to, oh, sorry, so any public comment on this matter? No? Okay. If I could get a motion to adjourn this public hearing until, I mean, I think it's, the next meeting is November 12th. I think that's appropriate, so if you get a motion to adjourn the meeting until November 12th at 7:00 PM?
Someone. Mr. McGarty.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi.
Yes.
Mr. Wodzowski.
Yes. Okay, so next up, I have the, the public hearing on the, on the local law to override the tax cap. I guess just, just real quick on this before we take public comment. So currently, the tentative budget has us exceeding the tax cap by about 5%. After the last workshop, you know, the board has made, we were able to shrink that percentage in the amount above the tax cap to get it, and there'll be more on this tomorrow, we have a budget workshop tomorrow, which will be going over this in detail. But we're going to be able to get it closer to only 1% above. And basically going from, right now, we're over the tax cap by roughly $459,000. We're going to probably be able to shrink that depending on if the board makes all the moves that we spoke about, get it down to a little over $100,000, so we're coming down, you know, quite a bit. We're only going to be about maybe 1% over, but we'll get more into that tomorrow. We have the next budget workshop at tomorrow's meeting.
It's at 5:30?
Yes, at 5:30, yes.
5:30, because I thought there was a confusion.
Yep, it's at 5:30 tomorrow. We did that because we wanted to make sure we could have the entire board there, so we were, we had to move it from Thursday to Wednesday. So that's basically it, you know, going from, I mean, currently, the tentative budget from about 5% down to a little over 1%, going from about $459,000 down to a little over $100,000. That's what, you know, with the changes we discussed at the workshop last week, where we're going to get to. But again, we'll have that for tomorrow's meeting to discuss further. But I don't see any way to not go over the tax cap this year. So in order to get to, you know, to complete the budget, we do need to go over this. And I will say, again, just because we go over the, just because we author pass a local law to go over the tax cap, it doesn't mean that the final adopt the budget goes over the tax cap. Town board ultimately decides that. But I don't believe we'd go any further in the process until we, you know, vote to allow this. So with that, I'll open up for public comment. Yes?
Richard Randazzo, just a question, what is, what's the amount for the tax cap? What are you allowed to go with that existing tax cap?
So actually, let me pull this up. It's, it's $9,971,852. And we're able to get it down, again, with the changes, we believe we can get down to being about 1.06 over, percent over the tax cap, or about $106,894. But that's, that's the, the cap is 9.971 million dollars.
Based on your tentative budget, you're taking the four major categories. What is the, based on your tentative budget, what is the proposed tax rate? What percentage increase is that over 2024?
So right now, where we're at is, if we take the new, what we spoke about and put into place, we're able to get to, we're at 4.78% now, and the new tax rate, if we go with the changes we spoke about last week, we're going to be about 5.0995. And that amounts to roughly a $95 increase on the home assessed to $300,000. And if you break that down, we're really talking about, you know, two Dunkin' Donuts coffees. So that is $7.91 a month for the increase that we're expecting on a home assessed of $300,000. That's where we're at.
Well, I think, first of all, to characterize an increase based on two Dunkin' Donuts coffees, that's not given any consideration to how many Dunkin' Donuts coffees the taxpayers already paying before that additional map is added. But what actually is the, besides the tax rate, what is the proposed increase on a percentage basis of those taxes over 2024? So what's proposed for 2025 over 2024 as far as actual increase in the taxes?
I just gave you the amount, sorry, I don't have the math. You can come tomorrow, you can come tomorrow night and get it a few.
No, no, I, well, I've actually looked at some of it.
Yeah.
But I mean, my calculation was, it looked like about a, almost a 12% increase.
That was for the tentative budget, with the new changes, it is much less than that, so.
If you don't know, at this point.
I just gave you the numbers, I mean, we just finalized it today, so I've not done the, so it's much less. It's actually about half, so, so it's much, it's not a double-digit tax increase.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes?
Yes, Brian, a couple of things. I would certainly hope that in consideration for those of us who are on fixed incomes, getting social security, who will only see perhaps this 2% increase, that the town board and the supervisor and, and other people that might be getting a rather large increase, perhaps consider scaling back their increase. And I don't know what that's going to be, but I would certainly ask it for consideration for the population of the town. I do want to say that I totally support our police, our buildings and grounds, our highway department, sanitation. I am so pleased with the work and the hard work that all of them do, and would support any raise that, that those folks would get, to certainly keep them working for Cornwall and to support them in the jobs that they do. I do want to make one point that I am so tired of hearing from towns and municipalities and villages, comparing, comparing the reason why towns have to override the tax cap compared to school districts. As a former member of the Cornwall Central School District School Board, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm only speaking for myself, first of all, school districts get to vote on their budget, and the communities vote on that. The community does not get to vote on the town budget or a village budget. It is decided by the board, that we put our faith in. Additionally, by saying that, which was said at the budget meeting, that, well, school districts get a tremendous amount of, of aid, and that's why they can, they don't have to override the tax cap. If they were to override the tax cap, they would have to have a supermajority vote to approve their budget anyway. You cannot compare a school district to a town or a village, because that is like comparing apples and oranges. And I, I think it's just rude to do, it's disrespectful to the schools, and we need to stop that line of, of talk, because it is very, very untrue. The, you cannot compare the buildings, you cannot compare the staffing, you cannot compare the programs to what a town or a village has to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, yeah, sorry about that, Mr. Randazzo, so it is a, it's a, the original tentative budget was about 12%. It's now a 6.7% increase. That's what the calculation is.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Yes?
Mr. Wodzowski, just to clarify, Ezra Zohar, town resident.
Yes.
The 6.7% increase, is that saying that that's a raise on top of the taxes from '24 to '25?
So that is a percentage, so if you look at, yes, that's, so last year's tax rate was 4.78, four or five per thousand of assessed. We would be going to 5.0995, and so that's the percentage increase, and it's in the tax rate per thousand of assessed value.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes. Is there any further questions on the tax cap? No? Okay.
May I say something?
Yes.
You know, this is my first year on the board, so I, I'd heard about the tax cap, I followed it in the news, but I didn't really understand until this year how it came into fruition and how it then is supposed to affect a community like Cornwall. And I'm a taxpayer here, I've been a taxpayer for 20 years, I get the bill, I pay the taxes. I didn't really ask a lot of questions. Well, now I'm in a position where I ask a lot of questions, I see a lot of numbers, and I get a better understanding. But I didn't realize that in 2012, this was instituted by Albany. So Governor Cuomo was sent a bill by a heavily influenced by cities representatives to put a tax cap on everyone except for the five boroughs, the city of New York. So for some reason, although 65 out of 150 assembly people come from the city of New York, they decided that they should be excluded from the tax cap, which I found kind of interesting. Although they voted that you and I should have a tax cap. So the tax cap was supposed to be 2% per year, no more than, or whatever the inflationary rate was, whichever one is left, right? So in 2022, the inflationary rate was over 9%. And in 2023, the inflationary, inflationary rate was almost 6%. And this particular budget struck me, especially in the initial numbers, as, as shocking, right? But this is the year also that we are negotiating labor contracts with buildings and grounds and sanitation and the good people that work for us. And we're also negotiating contracts with our police department, who has traditionally been paid less than neighboring jurisdictions with similar police activity, responsibilities, and resources. And I also believe from the numbers that I've seen that our workers are similarly situated to our police department in that they have been consistently paid less than neighboring jurisdictions that have the same resources, the same, or similar populations, similar tax base, and the like. And so I'm wondering, as I look back to 2012, why is it that Albany wanted us to have this difficult discussion every single year? What was Albany trying to tell us about the way we ought to be living to put us under this particular self, self-scrutiny exercise every year? And I don't know the answer to that, but I have appreciated lately how much Albany has liked to tell us as a small municipality how we ought to be operating, the number of housing units we ought to have, the type of housing units we ought to have, the spacing of the housing units, the population, and how we're supposed to look as a community. And I wonder, when I look back at 2012, if Albany wasn't starting that puzzle process. We'll put a piece here, we'll put a piece there, and the next thing you know, a community like Cornwall cannot subsist unless it attacks ratables like crazy and brings in things like hotels and warehouses and things that could change us. So I understand that we need to look at the bottom line, and I'm very cognizant of the money that we spent and how we spend it and who we spend it on. But I am not beholden to an Albany imposed program that is, I think, directed at telling us how we're supposed to look, how we're supposed to live, how much industry we're supposed to have, and what our conserved areas are, and the, and the like. So I'm sorry for this speech tonight, and if you've watched me over the years, you know, I don't do this. But I'm very, I'm at the end of my rope with Albany telling us how we're supposed to look and live. And what this does is, when we have these tax caps, and then we have these deficits, and we have these issues where we cannot meet our normal services needs, we have a situation where we can only access additional money to improve our capital or our infrastructure projects when Albany says, and what Albany says we can do it on, right? So we're, we're at the mercy of grants. And while we are at the mercy of grants, we've seen, like, what, what are we doing now? $3 million in grants are coming in on things that meet our needs as a community, but also require a lot of state scrutiny, right? And the state got to decide what the grants were for, and the state gets to decide how it gets metted out, and the state got to decide who wins. But we're not the state, we're Cornwall, we're just us. We just want to raise our kids and live our lives and have a backyard, if we're lucky enough to have a backyard. And we want the people who work here to be happy to work here and to not leave us for New Windsor or Hamptonburg or any other town that will offer them $3 or $4 more an hour. We want to pay people a living wage, we want people to be happy to work here, and we want also a balanced budget. And sometimes those things will collide, like this year is really hard because we have these labor contracts, and they're hopefully going to be for four years, but, you know, with the inflationary rate and what happened to everyone during COVID and how money is not worth what it was in 2021 and 2022, we're going to have to do some hard things. So I just would hope that when you're all watching how the budget is breaking out, I have told my fellow board members that I am not interested in balancing the budget on the backs of the people who work for us, and I'm committed to treating them fairly, because that's what everybody wants, to be treated fairly. And if we have to make some tough cuts in other places, we will. But I appreciate you listening to me about the tax cap, because I'm pretty sure it's clear, I think it's, it's not right, that we have to do this every year, and we have to remind each other that 2% is where it's at. 2%, just remember, that is arbitrary. If somebody in Albany decided the number two was their favorite number that day, maybe they were watching Grover, I don't know. But since it's nowhere near inflation, I don't know where they got it. And it certainly isn't applicable to us now post-COVID, dealing with what happened in 2020 and 2021 when the federal government released cash into the ether, right? It's Econ 101. If you push cash into a system, the value of the goods that the cash is going to buy is going to go down while the price is going up. It's just economics, and we're dealing with it now. 2025, all of that extra cash and stimulus money and the things that they were telling us in 2020 and 21 have come to roost, and, and now we're dealing with it. So I invite people to email me and comment, whatever you like, but I hope you know that whatever I'm doing, I'm trying to keep us us. Our values are important to me, the way our town is is important to me. And I think sometimes the numbers will have to met that out, and sometimes the tax rate will have to go up. But I'm hoping that's not every year, right? But I'm, I'm warning you now, this year, it's probably going to go up a little bit. And I won't call it Dunkin' Donuts coffees, but we're working on it. We're not there yet, we haven't gotten to, I guess, how many coffees, but we're working on it. I appreciate it, thank you for this.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, most people too, so all the special districts, which were about to have the benefit assessment district public hearing, those all count towards the tax cap too. And I know the Association of Towns and some of the other organizations, they're trying to exempt those from the calculation, because that's really unfair too, that you have all the benefit assessment districts in there. You have like D E C mandated infrastructure projects that cost $10, $20 million. That gets thrown into your calculation too, all the debt service costs on that. And so what you end up with is a situation where it's kind of, and actually, this year, you're going to see, for the most part, we're actually cutting taxes in the benefit assessment districts, except for one of them, because again, we have a D E C mandated project. But if you look at, and you know, you're going to see this, we're actually cutting taxes in most of those districts, except for one. You know, but again, like Karen said, we built this budget around the idea that we were going to have these union contracts this year, and that we were going to try to invest in our workforce and, you know, do what's right by the workforce, because quite frankly, we're concerned that we're going to start having, you know, folks in our workforce, and this has already happened this year and in past years, people are leaving to go elsewhere. We train them, they get a certification, and they go elsewhere because they make $7, $8 more elsewhere. And, you know, I don't want to be the training ground for the rest of Orange County municipalities. I want to keep our folks here that know the community and know how to do the work. So, you know, again, we have a budget workshop tomorrow at 5:30, it's going to be upstairs. If the public has more questions, please come to that workshop, it'll be livestreamed as well. You'll also have another chance to weigh in when we have the public hearing on the preliminary budget, which I believe we're going to set for November 7th, somewhere around there. But if there's no further, you know, comment, I'd like to move on to the public. Yes?
I want to assure the public that I'm going to be going at the budget again in this workshop with you in mind. There's a lot of trade-offs, as I was receiving more information, that we really need to face down. I think the workforce has changed, even, you know, this generation, where people are moving to other jobs, it's, it's for money. The days of my, you know, my, my generation of working 20, 30 years in one place, one occupation, that's, that's changing. People are going to move, and, and good for them that they have the courage to go and to move to other places. But we live here, and I don't want to force people out, and so my priority, I've been paring down the numbers again of things that I have been given, and I know I'm going to get more things tomorrow. I'm here for the town and the taxpayers, and I hope to find a balance for our employees, but the taxpayers are my priority. Thank you.
Josh, if I could, not to get into debate, it'll be time for discussion on the budget, but just to respond to the councilwoman's comments, this town board doesn't have to beholden to Albany, but you have to be beholden to the taxpayers.
You could.
That you worry about employees leaving, how about the residents are going to be leaving? Because they can't afford to stay here. I mean, I watched the video from last week's meeting, but it's always been, the town is 85%, you know, bedroom community, residential. You're not going to get big industrial parks, anything else that's going to change that. But the concern that I will say is, and I negotiated a lot of the contracts over the years. I think we've always been fair, sometimes lower, sometimes higher than neighboring communities. But you have to analyze, what is that neighboring community? What does, what does that job entail in a different community? But I think the thing that, one thing that concerns me is, the 2023 budget was 13.7 million dollars. Two years later, the proposed 2025 budget is over $16 million. That, that is just, that's astronomical. I mean, it's almost a $3 million increase in just two years. So you've got to look a lot harder and a lot deeper as to what you're doing, not nearly willing. There's got to be analysis on how you're spending the taxpayers' money. You got to get the bang for the buck. And if you're not doing that, all you're doing is burdening the taxpayers further every year with it. 5% increase, two years in a row, add that up, there's other factors that come into it. And all I'm saying is, you got to look closely at that budget. I understand about contracts, labor, you want to be fair to the employee. I understand about contracts, labor, you want to be fair to the employee, there are a lot of good employees, they do a good job. But there has been a high turnover in a town of Cornwall with our employees, there just hasn't been. People come, people go, but there's nothing abnormal about what we've done. So all I'm saying is, I'll be interested tomorrow night to hear more about the budget, and hopefully we can have some discussion and some input on it. But I think there's a lot of questions to be asked about this budget. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any further comment before I move on to Benefit Assessment districts? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing on the tax cap override?
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Okay. Next up, I have a public hearing on the Benefit Assessment districts, which for those out there, you know, if you're looking at the budget, those are basically all, if you look outside the four main funds, you look below and you're going to see, you don't have the fire district input yet, that'll come by the preliminary. That is not, the town has no oversight of the fire districts, that's an independent, you know, taxing authority. But if you look at the hydrants, Cornwall Lighting, Oars Mills Salisbury Lighting, Sanitation, Hidden Glen Drainage, you know, the, all the sewer districts, Main Street Parking, First Cliff Heights Water, those are all the ones we're talking about right now. So I guess what I'll do is, I'm just going to read the list and I'm going to see if anyone's here to comment specifically on the district, and if you have questions about specific districts, just let me know. So first up, let's go with the hydrants district. Does anybody have questions about the hydrants district? Next up, we have Cornwall Lighting District. Is there any questions concerning, or public comment on the Cornwall Lighting District? No? Is there any questions on the Oars Mills Salisbury Lighting District? No? Okay. Sam, yes?
I think we do have a member of the public, I think it has something to do with, you're in the, we're in the Cornwall Sewer District, correct? I think that's the one.
Hi.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you please state your name and your address, just for the record?
My name is Kathleen Tilton.
Sure.
And I'm at 18 Poplar in Cornwall. I'm quite confused, to be honest with you. I received this about, I want to say 10 days ago, maybe?
Yes.
And I started to go around to my neighbors because I thought the, this card that I received had to do with something totally different, being told tonight that this is something that took me into another direction.
Sure.
So I went from house to house around, thinking it was something totally different, and nobody on my block, any of the houses that I went to, had received this card. And so I am here in my total disbelief as to why I received it, and nobody else on my block has this card.
So what happens every year is, my office, we have the same list, same properties, it goes to a company, it gets sent out, they all went out, same as last year. I know, I own a property on Main Street, I know that I got a card sent to that address because I'm in, you know, some of these districts. I have other friends that live in other districts, they receive the cards as well. So I can't explain, sometimes there's issues with the mail, there's, I can't explain why that would have happened.
Something right behind you on Rose Hill Park, we all got.
Okay, I'm on Poplar.
Yeah.
And you received it. Not one single person that I went to, I went to four or five houses on my block and no one received it. Next door to me, on either side, across the street, couple houses down, and not one single person received this card. So I'm here in a little bit of like disbelief as to why I got it, no one else did. I have no idea.
So, I mean, look, it's required by law that we send this out to everyone that's in a special district. I think you would, you know, so they were sent out, I don't know what, I mean, once it goes to the mailhouse and it goes out, we can't really control.
And it's very different now, the mail, the mail is not, not anymore. It's always going to be, you know, the town. It's all the way up in it. It goes the hell away. Yeah. So can you tell me even why I got it? Like, what is the reason why? I received it? I mean, I don't even know, like, you know, well, just, I mean, I don't even know why I had it.
So, what'd you say, Ryan, you're on Popla?
I'm on Poplar.
You're on Poplar, okay. So you would be in, you're going to be in, what, the Cornwall Lighting District, and you're going to be in Cornwall Sewer District One?
That's what I thought.
And Sanitation, so I think those should be on there. And what we have to do is, we have to basically let you know that there's a public hearing so you come and you can give your feedback on, you know, on possible tax increases, you know, to the Benefit Assessment districts that you're in. And so this is just notice so that you know that you have the right to come and...
Tax increases.
Benefit Assessment, actually.
Yeah. So, so just, you know, in the case of, you know, just while, you know, we're going through this, so the only, all of the districts, with the exception of Cornwall Sewer Operating and Maintenance, which is SS1, that is our biggest sewer district in town, and there is an increase there because we had to borrow for a DEC mandated INI project, and that's been completed. And there's also going to be a Phase 2 project to the Shore Road Sewer Treatment Plant that's going to happen in the future, but that is the only district this year that we are, that we're going to have increases in.
So that's, I'm getting an increase?
Yes.
Yeah. I got it. Okay. Okay, so I should tell other people on my street that they should have gotten this, and they're going to get an increase. Chances are.
Yes, yeah. I mean, unfortunately, just, you know, so everyone knows that, that with sewer, with sewer districts in New York State, the only people that can pay back the capital, the bonding, are the people that use the benefit. So if there's 3,000 people in that district, those 3,000 people are going to pay back the borrowings. If there's 450 people, which are in like First Cliff Sewer District, they're the ones that are going to pay it back. So, you know, it's just, unfortunately, we can't spread that out amongst every, yeah, yes. Any further? Yes?
All right, Max Margielys. So just to be clear, I've just talked to a few people around me who also seem to have gotten a card.
Yeah.
So I guess two questions. One, how do we know what district we're in? And two, just to clarify, you're saying that the only districts that are going to have the tax, you could be assessed for an increase, will be the Brooklyn Sewer District?
No, the Cornwall Sewer District.
The Cornwall Sewer District.
Yes. So if you're on Main Street, you are in SS1, so you are going to get...
Cornwall Sewer District listed on here as part of the...
It's Cornwall Sewer O&M?
Yeah. Cornwall Refuge, First Cliff Heights Sewer, Brooklyn Sewer District, Hoover Dam Sewer, Majestic Sewer, Hidden Glen Drainage District. And yeah, there's no Cornwall Sewer District out here?
You're, oh, I'm just, you're putting it out there. You're on Main Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you will be, people that are in Cornwall Sewer District One are going to be getting an increase tied to DEC mandated infrastructure projects.
Okay. But is there any place that we could look to know who lives in what district? Or is people here who don't live on Main Street, will they be by?
Yes, if you go onto the town's website and you, or you go into Orange County Image Mate, which has all of the property tax records, or if you, if you go onto the town's website and you type in your address, where you go when you would pay your tax bill, it'll list and it'll show you all of the different funds or districts that you pay into. So if you go on our website now, click on the link, and it's going to say, you know, pay your taxes, right? Click on that link, put in your address, it'll pull up last year's tax bill, and that'll list all of the different, you know, districts and funds that you paid taxes to. And that'll have a complete list.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further comment on the Benefit Assessment districts, public hearing? No? Okay. So if I could get a motion to close the public hearing on Benefit Assessment districts?
So moved. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Ms. George?
Yes. Okay, moving on, public comment on agenda items. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Yes?
I'm Paul Starmer in Cornwall. Tonight I'm representing the Cornwall Youth Garden Committee, and just wanted to thank the town board members for considering the Partners for Climate Action Ecological Restoration Grant. It's a multiple, but works out a lot of possibility of having these extra funds to expand what we do in conjunction with some of our public partners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harley Castillo, Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council, and I'm also, would like to thank the town board for considering pursuit of this grant that we would partner with the Cornwall Youth Garden Club on.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any of the agenda items? Yes?
Tracy Andrews, President of the Cornwall Cleanup Crew. We thank you for adding us to your agenda, and we look forward to speaking with you about our shed and placement there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So, okay, so moving on to agenda items. Let's first, we have a resolution, this is the speed limit reduction, the amended request for CR 9.
Kind of lengthy, you want to...
Yeah, I'm going to ask you, if I can get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. One, that the town board does hereby withdraw its prior request of the Orange County Superintendent of Highways to approve reduction of the speed limit on Mineral Springs Road, County Road Number 9, to 40 miles per hour. And two, that the town board does hereby request the Orange County Superintendent of Highways to approve reduction of the speed limit on Mineral Springs Road, County Road Number 9, to 40 miles per hour, on the portion thereof running from 200 feet south of the southerly intersection of Gadirri Drive to the Cornwall Woodbury Town Line. And three, that the town board does hereby authorize and direct the town clerk to send a certified copy of this resolution along with the applicable New York State Department of Transportation form for speed limit reduction requests. Two, Orange County Superintendent of Highways is going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the New York State DEC agreement for Moona Creek Angler Access. Whereas the town of Cornwall has received a request from the New York State Department of Environmental Protection DEC to allow members of the public to fish in the Moona Creek along New York State Route 32, whereas grant of DEC's request does not require the town to make any improvements or incur any expense, whereas allowing fishing as a recreational activity is in the public interest. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby grants the DEC said request, and two, that the supervisor is authorized to execute any documents necessary to carry out said grant, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign the kennel agreement with the town of New Windsor. Whereas the town board has before it a proposed kennel agreement between the town of New Windsor and the town of Cornwall for provision of dog control services. Whereas the town board finds the terms and provisions of the proposed kennel agreement to be acceptable. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. One, that the town board hereby approves the kennel agreement with the town of New Windsor, a copy which is attached. And two, the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to sign the dog control agreement and all documents necessary to implement in terms and provisions, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with Central Hudson for seasonal lighting. Whereas the town of Cornwall, this is for the stove lakes that are already, just in case everybody knows, the 17 locations on Main Street. Whereas the town of Cornwall has received a proposed license agreement from Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation to install temporary seasonal lights on utility poles on Main Street in the town of Cornwall. And whereas the town wishes to enter into said contract for the temporary installation of seasonal lighting in the town. Now therefore it be resolved as follows. One, that the town board does hereby approve the said license agreement, and two, that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out the terms of the same, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Geschwind, for actually doing the inventory. I appreciate your legwork on that. Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign a Central Hudson agreement for the locations of the Hometown Heroes banners in the town of Cornwall. Whereas the town of Cornwall has received a proposed license agreement from Central Hudson Gas and Electric to install temporary banners on utility poles along Main Street, Hudson Street, and Willow Avenue in the town of Cornwall. And whereas the town wishes to enter into the said contract for the temporary installation of banners in the town, now therefore it be resolved as follows. One, that the town board does hereby approve the said license agreement, and two, that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out the terms of the same, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution to enact the local law to override the tax levy limit. Whereas the town board has before it consideration of proposed local law entitled, the local law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law, subsection 3C. Whereas the town, I'm sorry, whereas following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore it be resolved as follows, that the town board does hereby adopts the above local law, which said local law shall be effective upon filing in the office of the Secretary of the State in Albany, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution to accept the Benefit Assessment districts. Whereas heretofore, the town of Cornwall held the required annual public hearings on the town's Benefit Assessment districts, and whereas after the town board reviewed all of the comments by the, by the public, the public hearings were closed. Now therefore it be resolved as follows, that the town board does hereby adopt the annual Benefit Assessment district rules as submitted, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved.
One second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution that would authorize the town board to submit the application Partners for Climate Action Ecological Restoration Grant. This is for the pollinator gardens that the CAC is going to be working on, and for the town supervisor to execute any documents necessary for submission of the application. Whereas the town of Cornwall is eligible to receive a Partners for Climate Action Ecological Restoration Grant to be used for local ecosystem restoration projects such as promotion of pollinator habits and forest health. And whereas in order to receive the said grant, the town must submit an application for it. Now therefore it be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby authorizes submission of an application for a Partners for Climate Action Ecological Restoration Grant, and two, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the same and any documents necessary for submission of the application, going to get a motion to approve.
So moved. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Okay. Next up, Agenda Number 9. This is really just notice for the, for the town board. This is, as you may recall, the Scunney Month Rail Trail, that's going to be starting shortly. The county legislature, they submitted their required notice, 30 days' notice, that their intent is to be lead agency on the project, that's going to essentially span, it's a 10-mile section, 101-acre project traversing town of Bloom Grove, Chester, Village of Okay. Next up, agenda number nine. This is really just notice for the, uh, for the town board. Um, this is, as you may recall, the Scunney Month Rail Trail. Um, that's gonna be starting, uh, shortly. The county legislature, they submitted their required notice, thirty days' notice, that their intent is to be lead agency on the project. It's gonna essentially span, it's a ten-mile section, hundred-and-one-acre project, uh, traversing town of Bloom Grove, Chester, Village of Washingtonville, uh, ends at Orange County, Camp LaGuardia, obviously goes through the town of Cornwall. I think you, you know, uh, you guys know where it, uh, where it is. They're circulating for lead agency. Um, we are gonna be, was it interested?
Interested.
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 So, we can certainly, um, you know, look, I'm sure the other municipalities are gonna do the same. Um, I would just, you know, the one thing I like to be, you know, kept in no, in notice of what's going on. So I think we're just gonna request that they send us stuff. So we're made aware as we go throughout the process on this.
Yeah, the supervisor will be sending a letter in to, um, the county saying that the town is an interested agency and you wanna have copies of all documents used in secret review and submitted for the trail. Um, that way, when they're ready to make a secret determinations, board can send in whatever recommendations, questions, concerns that it has, they'll be taken into consideration, secret process.
We're just preserving our rights to comment, basically.
You don't need to vote on it or anything, just gonna send a letter.
All right, number ten. Okay, so traffic petition for Shields Road. So I think, you know, for many of you, look, I didn't know where Shields Road, uh, was until recently, and I, I actually drove up there today. Um, for those of you that live out in that part of town, you probably know where Shields Road is. It's like a, it's a, this very short road that basically connects Mineral Springs and Angola. There's only a few houses on the road. But we did receive notice from some residents on the road that they're concerned about speeding, about some other, you know, uh, activity that's happening on the road by, you know, residents, non-residents, whoever they are. They brought it to our attention. Um, I know other board members have spoken to them, have gone out there. The police chief, um, you know, we're gonna be putting some, uh, we're gonna monitor, I guess, uh, some of the, uh, the traffic flow through there. Um, I believe he went, and he also looked to see if there was any, you know, uh, what, uh, police reports? For that road?
Correct. Past ten years, there was one vehicle disabled in a ditch.
Yeah. Yeah. And so what the, the residents that live on the road have asked for is they would like a one-way, they would like a speed limit reduction, um, there was a couple other things they had asked for, all of which of course, um, are, there's a few things we can do as a town, but other things would have to go to the state for decisions. So I think the next step is for us to gather data. I mean, I, I told, uh, most recently, I told these residents via email that we've gotta do some data gathering. And, you know, we've gotta see what's, you know, going on there before we make any, you know, commitments to what we're able to do. I, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Tommy?
No, I mean, touched, touched on it all. Any decision we make pretty much has to go through Albany, imagine that. And, um, some of the other things they asked for was like no through traffic, which obviously we can't do on a town road that residents pay for. And, uh, weight limit, which would be hard because there's no structures in the road that would warrant that. So that's pretty much where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, biggest issue with Shields Road, um, Mr. King, uh, they got some young children when they go to school in the morning, people going to work, uh, coming from, like, you know, off Angola, going through Shields onto Mineral Springs, trying to get a piece of a cotton. And, uh, according to him, they are, you know, going excessive speeds and worried about, uh, young pedestrian get struck. So to him, it's pretty sicky as for the children.
Yeah, so I think, I think we're gonna, you know, we'll get some data, we'll see what we're able to do. Um, certainly if the board decides, we can, you know, we'll go through the process, pass resolution, send it to the county, up to the state. Again, common theme, you know, we actually have, currently waiting on, we currently have a school speed zone request with Albany that'll be sent back in May for in front of the middle school, waiting to hear from them on that. But I have to say, our track record's not very good at getting Albany to approve our speed limit reductions. They've pretty much just, you know, reject all of them. So I'm hoping for the, for the school speed zone in front of the middle school, I would think that would be a no-brainer, but I guess we'll see what, what Albany says about that one. Um, but, uh, that's the status of Shields Road. Let me, let's move on to the next. We have insurance coverage for town volunteers. So this is just, um, we had received a request from the Cornwall Historical Society about, you know, uh, whether or not the town could, could add their volunteers to the town's insurance policy. And, you know, look, we, we reached out to the insurance provider, we got cost, but then it kind of occurred to me, I don't, I mean, they're a separate, you know, five oh one C, you know, not, uh, not-for-profit, so I don't know how we would extend coverage to another.
Well, depends on what they're doing, Josh. If, just because they're members of the separate five oh one C three doesn't mean they can't be volunteers for the town. But if they're volunteers for the town, they genuinely have to be doing volunteer work. It can't be they're doing work for the five oh one C three and we're just calling it work for the town.
I believe it's work for the five oh one C, C three, like, it's like historical work for the historical society.
There may be a way that it can be brought under, but unless you have a discussion with the broker, and I'll be happy to help with that, um, you know, and we get some representation from the carrier that they're actually covered, I would be very concerned about that.
If I could get a little bit more information, I spoke with Sue Camlin, the president of the Historical Society. Um, they sent, I guess they sent this correspondence to the clerk's office in June. And, um, really the question is, Steve, is that they were, they were told that, like, people that come in and visit the museum, if some kind of accident happens in the building, that those people, they would be covered. What they're not understanding is they're, that they're being told that they're not covered if something happens to them in the building, which I thought was kind of odd. So I think we really need to have a meeting of the minds of this and clarify.
Yeah, something's wrong with that.
Something is really wrong because I, I said, you know, if, if anyone goes and uses Munger Cottage and there's an injury or something, like, you're covered. So I don't know why volunteers would have, if you're on town property, if I could ask for clarification, if you're a volunteer, say, and you're doing an event on town property, um, you would be covered. Like, it's like, like you say, if something falls, like a tree limb falls on you, I mean, you're, you're covered, you're on town property. Am I correct?
There's, there's, you're talking two different things.
Right.
Let's, let's talk about, for example, cleanup. Somebody wants to go and clean up town property by the roadsides or what have you.
Town property?
Right.
Okay.
Town, town roadside. Ju- the mere fact that something's being done on the town roadside, the town will be covered for accidents that happen there. We have general liability policy.
Right.
Doesn't matter if they're a volunteer or just somebody walking along or whatever.
Exactly.
The people who are doing the cleanup though, if they're doing it as part of a town program, will be covered if they throw something and it hits someone. If they leave something in the road and a, a vehicle comes by and swears because of it, will be covered as volunteers working for the town. Let's say however that you were cleaning something along, up on the roadside, just out of the goodness of your heart, voluntarily, you're a five oh one C three, comes along, you wanna do it. If you're not doing it for the town, if you haven't established that you're doing as a volunteer for the town, when you throw that thing or when you leave something in the road, you won't be covered under the town's policy.
Okay.
So maybe that's what we're talking about, but I, I gotta tell you, this whole business of-
Should I have her reach out to you?
We should set up a conference call.
Okay, that's fine. I think if we just have the conversation because there's-
And then bring the broker in, I'm sure you can get to the bottom of this.
Exactly. All right.
Yeah, we actually, there was, uh, if you may recall, with the youth committee, we had to also look into seeing if they were covered as well, but we had a contract and it was a town event.
Had the structure appropriately.
There was, yeah, so I guess it comes down to structure and-
Right.
Okay. So it sounds like we just gotta do a little bit more looking into-
Yeah, I, I just think we have to gather some more facts on this because-
We do have, it is gonna be roughly, just the broker did say roughly forty dollars a volunteer to add them to, you know, to the policy, is what I was quoted.
Okay, and their broker quoted that it was like four dollars eighty-one cents per member. So like, that's why I think we need to have a meeting. Because the price tag you're telling is much different from what-
Okay, so we will come back to that. Um, Police Department Speed Tracker Purchase. So, this is agenda item number twelve. So again, this would be, um, we have the, we have the Police Tech Grant, that's, uh, the funds would be expended to pay for this. We have the Police Tech Grant. If I could get a motion to authorize the purchase of the Safe Pace Speed Tracker Plus from Traffic Logic Corporation in the amount of three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So moved. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Okay. Next up I have the Police Department No Shave November. If I could get a motion to authorize the Police Department to participate in No Shave November.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Next up I have, um, some personnel changes in the Highway and Sanitation Department. So as you're aware, we've had some recent departures from, um, highway, uh, buildings and grounds. And, and so we're looking to make some changes, um, uh, moving some folks around, hiring, uh, somebody new. So basically, we would be, um, last week, um, the Highway Superintendent, he conducted interviews, um, uh, for multiple openings that we had. We're looking to transfer sanitation laborer Ray Romero to the open highway laborer chauffeur position. We're looking to hire Christopher, uh, Baroud to fill the open sanitation laborer position. Also hire Justin Mott to fill the open buildings and grounds, groundskeeper position. All new hires and transfers will follow C S E A pay schedules for their appropriate position. Both new hires and the transfer possess any and all requirements to fill the position. Are there any questions before I ask for approval? Do you have any questions with Tommy? No? Okay, if I can get a motion to approve the-
But Tom, what can he spend his, uh, sanitation and, uh, buildings and grounds come in with?
So sanitation guy actually has a C D L A, which is not required, but it is extremely helpful and has some, you know, experience in the field. And, um, Buildings and Grounds didn't really have experience, but just seems like a kid that can easily pick it up and figure it out and fit in with the team.
So you said they're both step one?
Everyone starts at step one.
Okay.
Yeah, they all start at step one. That's, that's your first five years. Step one is year one, step two is year two, step three is year three. That's for everybody.
So if I could get a motion to approve the new hire in Buildings and Grounds, the new hire in Sanitation, and the transfer in Highway.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Next up I have the Lions Club Wreath and Roping Sale. Can I get a motion to approve their request to sell on town hall property?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, and if you also notice, like, they actually have, like, they're gonna be doing this activity on town property, they do have their own insurance.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. So next up we have, this is a continuation from last week. It's the Cornwall Cleanup Crew Equipment Shed Request. So I know that, you know, really what we have to do is we've gotta figure out, one, the best spot to put it. Um, we have a number of sheds that are now, we're now starting to acquire from different groups. And so we've gotta figure out, you know-
Basically, you're prompting us to do a cleanup of our own sheds.
Sheds.
Just old sheds and old structures and broken down old trailers and this and that. If we can do some cleaning up and figure out a spot to put you guys, I think there's probably a bit back there.
Yeah, so it's just a matter of, we gotta do some of that cleaning. We're gonna have to figure out, we do have neighbors that live on Bar Avenue. Um, and so we wanna make sure that whatever we put back there is gonna be neat and tidy, and maybe there's some kind of screening or, you know, I don't know.
We could probably put up a twenty-foot section of fence or so that just blocks all that.
Okay.
Do, um, Tom, do you have any suggestions? I was, I was speaking with, um, Ms. Andrews. Um, do you have any suggestions in certain terms of dimensions you think would be best?
The, the railcars work good. I mean, a lot of people are having extreme amount of success with those.
I, yeah, I just wanna make sure, you know, you're doing the fundraising efforts, make sure you buy something that could be installed. Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a timeframe?
I mean, that's gonna be one of our fall priorities to kind of clean up back there, so. Just, we'll, we'll stay in touch, you and I.
What's the timeframe for me with C V S?
For, what about C V S?
You're currently, I mean, you guys were here on the gathering.
You know, we're gonna ask C V S why.
C V S, um, that's a great question. It's easy, the, the easiest, best locale. Um, parking, um, visibility. We get a lot of honks. Sunday, ten to twelve people. Ten to twelve every Sunday.
Okay, so I guess it's really just a matter of, you know, stay in touch with Tommy, and then obviously you'll have to, you know.
Well, they're gonna need a license agreement.
Well, yes, sorry. So, um, so a license agreement, um, we'll have to have insurance, I would imagine, right? So, have you looked into that?
Have you looked into, uh, insurance yet?
Not yet.
Well, probably, because once you get the, the shed and the dimensions, that's insurance and the equipment. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on. I think you're just coming tonight to see if there's a possibility that you can actually do it.
I think we can definitely, it sounds, you know, it, it sounds like we're gonna be able to find a spot. We gotta do some, you know, cleanup on our end, which we have to do anyway. And then there's stuff you've gotta work out. So hopefully, if, you know, while you're figuring that out, we're doing our piece, we can like meet sometime later this year and, you know, get it squared away.
Right.
Um, okay, next up we have the Special Events Permit Cornwall Girl Scouts Yard Sale and Trunk or Treat. If I could get a motion to approve the two events for the Girl Scouts on October nineteenth, and then again on October twenty-seventh.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodehousey?
Yes. Okay, so next up we have the November thirtieth Shop Small Event. And I know that- Sorry. I know the board had had some questions last week. I know there was, I think you had asked about, um, you know, carriage rides, are we still having those? I guess the time, you know, I guess like the overall event time, um, you know, where we were gonna close the street down from, like, you know, these were all sort of questions that the board had had, you know, you know, um, how do we accommodate, uh, Prima and Cielito, and then I guess Canterbury at the other end? So is there maybe a reason to like have a more, I know we had closed down at one point, um, I think when the chamber had some food trucks or something, I mean?
We closed basically from the traffic circle to Willow to accommodate, one year we actually had two horse and buggy rides. But basically the carriage went up, turned around, came back, and that was the route.
I just think that we should be mindful of, uh, closing off a large section of our Main Street. Um, I, I know that there's been discussion to expand it to the circle. I mean, I think, I'd like to get away from that. I'd, I'd like to do what we originally planned, uh, in terms of, um, Union and Torrey. And then that's a way that it's, I don't know, it's, it's more contained. And, um, it gives the businesses a chance to act, the ones that are, you know, can freely get in and out of their business, especially for delivery. Um, I just, you know, I think it's important to support them on that. Um, now, we're only closing, we're only putting, again, maybe you can answer this for me. Um, we're just, we're basically taking, what, what's typically done is we're putting a large, one of our large vehicles, um, at Union and then a large vehicle at Torrey. That's it, correct? Uh, there's, oh-
We should let, yeah, Dawn answer.
Yeah, thank you, Dawn. I just, 'cause I heard some stuff and I just wanted to clarify.
Um, I met with the Safety Committee about closing the road, so I have all the answers to all of your questions.
Thank you.
So we are closing it from Willow Avenue to the circle. Torrey to Union was never part of it. Uh, at the last meeting, we spoke about possibly Torrey to the circle, but we were never doing it just to Union. Uh, the carriage would not be able to turn around. Um, we did, I did go in and I brought a translator into Celito Ningo. They are fully, um, supportive of us closing the road to Main Street, or to Willow Avenue. Uh, the only business that is concerned is Prima Pizza, and we discussed how to have a place for his delivery driver to have access to Prima either across the street at the Lemon Building, or possibly, um, right where we closed the road at the end of Willow, like, in that area, having a spot reserved for the delivery driver. Um, we may be able to have access for, um-
Canterbury.
Canterbury, thank you. Uh, through the back, we're looking into that. There is an entrance in the back, but we need to get permission from that business owner that owns it, that they can access it through there. Uh, we do have the horse and carriage lined up. I have the contract sent to me. I was waiting for tonight's meeting to sign it. I already lost the first horse and carriage, so I'm hoping that I can sign this one. Um, it actually was a blessing in disguise because this came in half the price. Um, so thank you, everybody, for the light. Um, and, um, what were the other questions? Uh, we have twenty-five of the Main Street businesses signed up to participate at this time. Um, we may have more. I haven't gotten a confirmation from all of them. And then we have six of our, um, our, uh, organizations, like the Cornwall Cleanup Crew, the Upper Room, um, Phil Cameron from the Lions Club said they will set up a pre-sale table so people can buy their rates and take their, um, purchase down to just pick it up. Um, and, uh, New Windsor EMS, we're gonna have a Santa, the Grinch, um, a DJ, possibly a snowflake lighting, hopefully. Um, any other question?
What, what's the time?
Oh, yes, that was the other question. So the main event is set up for three to seven. But the carriage ride, the Santa, I have every major event going from three-thirty to six-thirty, and the businesses are gonna break down at six-thirty. We had our meeting on Monday, so we made that clear. All breakdown's gonna start at six-thirty, so we can kind of clear the street and have everybody out at seven.
It's double, double seven?
Yes.
I mean, I still have some concerns with especially, I don't know if you spoke with Hans at the Canterbury. Um, they've already been stressed with- They've already been stressed with, you know, the bridge construction and now to further constrain and to close that off again. I will tell you personally, I use the municipal lot at the ambulance building. I'm the only one that parks there, by the way. It's a long walk, so I, I, I don't want to see that business lose business.
There is a back entrance into his lot. It used to be shaded off by the residents that lived in that building, but the shade is gone now. The owner is the guy who bought the.
The, the Burnaker?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he's pushing down, so it is down, so we are going to ask him for permission for the customers of the Canterbury to be able to use that entryway. And we're getting two four lights. That was the other thing. I don't need that example or not.
I think the other concern we had was the, the conflict with the village tree lighting.
So I did pitch out to the mayor when I found out that it was definitely a hysteria. I can go into extreme detail, but I was threatened by the mayor's wife. And then I was sent emails by the mayor that I did not personally text him to tell him that the event was happening. My communication was bad, even though it was on the rec calendar at the beginning of August. The Cornwall Hudson Events Committee knew about it in August and Scott Reecey had been emailed about it since May. So I apologize for not emailing the, or calling the mayor directly to inform him when they decided to hold the tree lighting at the same time as the shop small.
I thought because of that, that's why you changed, you know, you're gonna change your time, I mean, from.
We found out it might be. We didn't know for sure. We found out they were discussing it, so we moved it up a little bit, hoping. So I sent an email asking if maybe they could, if they were gonna do it, maybe do it later or the next night, and I was my other friend, so I dropped it.
I mean, you're just lighting the, the, the streetlights, and I know the fire, and, and the fire company is coming the first week of December.
This is not our tree lighting. This is just the shop.
This is not. This is just the shop, which is, you know, small business.
And shop small Saturday.
Are they lining up the snowflake lighting with this or?
We're not sure. We don't know for sure that everything's gonna be ready, so we're hoping that we can, but we don't know. That's.
And would you like that at dusk, like six-thirty?
If we can, we'd like to light it at like five.
I see this could be work. I, I do think it's workable with the time, if we just work together and coordinate it.
And everything I said about the mayor is all foilable. It's all in the mayor's email, so it's not. Do you hear anything else?
No, it's unfortunate. No, I mean, I, and I know since the beginning, I just, I know some of you have not been on the board. But one of the things that, you know, I've always found interesting is how the village and the town, if we could have like done a Saturday, the village could do a Saturday, the town could do a Sunday. That could like solve all the problems. But we seem to not want to do that for some reason, or it's not working out that way. I'll finish and then you can.
Yeah.
All right. And I know personally, I, what I do is I'll run from one event and I'll get down to the village because obviously you want to see both. But I just think you just work around it. I, I, and by the way, I want to remind everybody, this is like supposed to be a happy time of the season and supposed to be a positive community event.
Yeah, the businesses know it's happening.
Right, and I support it.
And they said that's great. More people will come out, so they'll come out for the tree lighting and come on to support the businesses hopefully.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I know what I was gonna say is that, so, you know, we were, the town was asked to de-conflict its tree lightings. And we agreed to de-conflict our tree lightings, and they can have a tree lighting on a separate night from the town. And so we're gonna have our tree lighting on the standard, which is usually, it's like the, it's gonna be Sunday, December eighth. So we did agree to de-conflict the tree lighting. We are doing that. There is only one shop small Saturday in the entire country and it happens to be on November thirtieth, so this isn't like we can just move this event. Because this is what it is. You know, and so.
Also, if the, the Main Street stores are breaking down at six-thirty, you might find that the crowds will dissipate around six and, and they'll have plenty of time to get down to the village to down to the village.
I, I agree with you. I, I think this could be workable. Let's hope what hap- now, um, excuse me, Dawn, as far as what's the problems in terms of the, the, the lighting of the.
The snowflakes?
Yes.
Um, we're just waiting to make sure that the lights work.
Oh, okay.
And then I don't know who makes that decision. I, I, that wasn't, I'm hoping that the board can make that decision.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's been a few, I was just gonna say, there's been a, there's been a request to do it the day before. And we have a request to do it on, on the thirtieth, so obviously, we have to decide the best time to do it. I know there was some thought around, well, the village is gonna put lights up too. Wouldn't it be nice to light them all at the same time? I mean, I can tell you that, again, I don't know how far along they are in that process. We just got our lights, what was it? It was like, you know, the last Friday in September. Central Hudson just energized our lights, like, what, a week ago? And this has been like an ongoing, over a year process to get going, so it's not, like, it takes a long time. If you're just starting from scratch to try to get lights and get everything installed and approved and order your lights, you know. So I don't know that we're gonna necessarily be able to time this, you know, like the lighting around what the village is doing. Because I mean, I just, you know, again, if, if the village is able to get them up, that's one thing, we could certainly consider that. But I, I haven't heard, you know, that they're gonna be able to, to pull it off yet, unless somebody knows something different.
I, I think the thirtieth would be good to try to target to light these decorations. Be a nice way to kick off the holiday season, especially on Main Street, if this is what we're doing this for. So I'm in support of lighting the decorations on the thirtieth. Let's hope, not hope for a snowstorm or something.
Or that maybe trees.
Have, have the snow. That might be nice, you know, some snow showers, no snow squalls, snow showers.
So I, I just think it'd be a nice thing for the Main Street to do it on the day.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think at this point, the next step.
It also confines there are resources as well.
Yeah, so we don't have to go for resources.
Yep. Or have extra police officers on hand. They're already assigned to this particular event.
So we support the business.
Okay, I mean, as a, you know, again, like I said, the next step for me is we've got to get them installed and make sure they work. So that, to me, is the next step in the process and we'll, we'll come back in, you know, November and we'll see where, you know, hopefully everything is. Because we gotta get a bucket truck too. We gotta borrow a bucket truck or rent a bucket truck to put these up. And then have everything work out.
Yeah, we're working into that. It's probably gonna be RPC.
Okay.
You can borrow a bucket truck. We don't have anyone on staff that's certified to use a bucket.
Yes, yes, that's right. You had said that.
You're probably within ten feet of primaries and secondaries, so there's a lot that could happen.
Yes, I, you know, I recall this when we were doing the LED street lighting project. We had to like authorize something saying that only people that know how to work around high voltage or work around high voltage, so correct, we don't have that. So, okay.
Are you voting on the special permit or?
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, I think, I think we should probably just vote on it and, yeah.
Time is of the essence.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to, let me just pull it up.
A motion to approve.
The special event for November thirtieth from, and you're saying, this is what, three to seven?
Three to seven.
Yep, three to seven PM, and there will be a road closure from Willow to the traffic circle. If I could get a motion to approve.
Does this also include the, right, we're gonna light?
If we can.
If, okay.
If we can.
Okay, if everything works. Yeah, so we're, we're planning on the third, okay, so moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rontzey?
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes. Okay, I don't have any items received after the final agenda, so let's move on to committee reports. Does the Conservation Advisory Committee, Carla, do you have anything you want to just brief the board on briefly?
Sure, we can, uh, we are continuing to meet on the wetlands and watercourses, propose local law. Of course, referencing the existing wetlands law. We had a really great turnout at the ball festival. We partnered with the Cornwall Garden Club and we had lots and lots of people in attendance and they really loved the caterpillar and, you know, it was a really great interactive effort. And we distributed a lot of pollinator seeds to books, so that was really great. So there's been a lot of focus on pollinators. We've been in touch with the village and are working with the village to do a pollinator planting on the lawn of the library, right next to where the village sign starts. And that is now targeted for, for the spring. And the town has submitted on the clean energy, NYSERTA Clean Energy Community side. The town has submitted two scoping documents for community campaigns, which I'm hoping the town will hear back on so that the campaigns can begin and hopefully the town will get a little bit of grant funding from NYSERTA for completing those campaigns. And the CAC will be responsible for managing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Councilmember Reyes, do you have anything to report on?
So the building department issued thirty, twenty-four permits, just make, as I always keep track. They have thirty-seven planning board projects open, which is eight more than it was ten months ago. So I know there was a concerted effort to start to get to the bottom of some of the older projects that have lain dormant for a long time to see if they can move them along or at least hose them out, but obviously that, that has, is still in the works. The planning board had Mr. Barrar in front of it in the last meeting and voted to waive the parking restriction. And then Sally Andor, which is the, the, it was a pop-up, now it's permanent.
Yep.
And now they're gonna open, or they're hoping to open a factory where they make, that will make their products here in Cornwall.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. It's the old gym kids space.
Yes, really exciting. And then, and then the Ottawa Creek Apartments, the parking saga continues. The ZVA didn't meet this, or this month. That's all I have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say on that, I mean, I will say eventually when that gets approved, hopefully, we'll be able to get, we're talking about the parking spots over there? Yeah, the eighteen parking spots.
I just called it a saga, so we don't have to get into it.
No, no, no.
If you wanna get into it.
No, I'm not saying we've been trying very hard to get parking spots added over there because there's a parking variance that we all know about. So I am very hopeful that we're gonna be able to add additional parking spots over there for the residents.
Yes, that was the proposal.
Yeah.
I, I guess I must have missed you. I felt they were approved, the eighteen spots.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they were. So they, yeah, they weren't supposed, yeah, and they didn't have, they don't have to do it. I think they recognize with the growing.
There's a real problem over there.
Population and, right, this is gonna attract more, more tenants.
Yes.
To, to rent the space.
Yeah. It was a real hardship for a lot of people.
Absolutely. Councilwoman McCarthy, you got anything to add?
Yeah, no, just, just on Camo, so, just for the first clip, just for the maintenance. And then one thing they did on tan, they did a monthly cleaning service. They cleaned that ten days. That next first clip, our water treatment plant, I hope it played better. Because of the drought that we've been having and it's gonna be happening for the next week, maybe ten days, according to the weatherman. Everything's very, like, the flow is, is actually pretty low. Most sewers, it's like, it's very low because it's like no additional water going to for infiltration. The BOD, actual demand, is still up two. It's been up two for a, I don't know if it's good. Twelve suspenders is two point nine, which is very low, again, partly because of the drought. There's no runoff of rain or seal. And the, uh, the corona form is at one, which is extremely low. And again, it's all partly due to the weather conditions that have been happening. No rain, so there's no runoff, there's no seal, there's no additional objects going to the sewer. The colas, that's what they call a swallow, basic cleanup, again, our collection system, they did an repair at the lateral at Coral Plaza. With the old Tucico store, I think there's some work over there. Tam did some monthly service at the Swallow District. And again, the flow rate is also extremely low, it's like point four and one point five, because it's like no runoff, extra water because, again, because of the weather. The BOD is also, it's like four point eight, which is still way under the limit, which is thirty. And TSS is eight point six, which is also extremely low, it's, again, because of the weather. And the corona form's one point nine, which is like very, very low. No rain is too high, but this is like one point nine milligrams per liter. Again, all partly due to the drought that happened. Coral Highway, the sister sewer, excuse me, sanitation with double pickups, streets sweep townwide. They installed six catch basins and two, four hundred fifty feet, fifteen inch drain pipe at Oak and Allen. Their whole project over there is done now with the sidewalks. A new drainage system's been revamped. And, and collected over there, additional streets of Oak and, I believe, also Hickory. Correct, Tom?
Correct.
Okay. And installed one catch basin, thirty feet of twelve inch drain. That's the Hickory Street part. Blacktop, Almond Hickory Drainers was installed. Great drive over there, by the way, guys, and between the, between Town and Pat Town and his construction company did a great job. Installed eighty, eighty feet of eighteen inch drainage pipe at Water Retail for the drainage issue over there. Assistant Corl Hudson in New Windsor, Monroe, Hamptonburg with, I guess, what's that town? Oh, with various road service projects. What did they do? Give them like dump trucks or?
Correct, we haul the aggregate for them, just like they haul the aggregate for us.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And set up traffic detours for nine eleven and the Tampa Columbus Annual Fall Festival went very well. Rebacked all the sidewalks for Fall Fest and provided traffic control for the Hasbrook, I guess, or for Testborn. Now, Testborn off of Hasbrook to get some test samples for the drains, a couple of drains projects at Hasbrook. Sanitation Department collected two hundred ninety-eight point three garbage that cost a ton, thirty-eight thousand, you know, twenty-four nine hundred dollars for disposal. And collected sixty point nine tons of recycle that cost a ton, six thousand five hundred sixty dollars and two cents. Buildings and grounds, just rescheduled a basic cleaning, maintenance of all the buildings and town property and also on the grounds with a cut-in and a full maintenance. And a breakdown of the pool, once realized and the coronator's system, once realized the pool, the coronator's systems and the pumps. For a mature. And that's it.
Councilwoman Scott?
Okay, I'm gonna talk about the, the lighting, street lighting project. Albright Electric has been out doing some repairs as per our maintenance agreement. I actually met with Mr. Gashwin, Highway Superintendent. We were actually looking at the map to see which, which lights have been repaired. Out of the eleven, so there were six that were repaired. It's kind of interesting to watch in real time how they check off what they fix instead of having our police department go out and look for the lights that are out, so that's an improvement. We also discussed, he, he needed, we talked about replacement nodes and I did let him know that as per our maintenance agreement, Real Term should be the one to assist us in getting more of those nodes. I am very pleased with the reduction of energy that we're using. It's definitely one of the things that is bringing costs down for, for us as the, in the town. And I want to thank the supervisor for giving me access to the EV charging stations so I can see in real time what's going on in terms of the usage. I have like the totals, like, we've had three hundred sixteen total charging sessions so far. The net, the gross revenue was three thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, twenty-six cents, I have noticed for October. The trend, it's trending slightly down. We've only had thirty-eight sessions for, for October. That might be just because things are getting cold, but we still have frequent users. The other thing Mr. Gashwin and I have discussed, and thank you for assisting me, Tommy, we're gonna label the stations and continue to work with supervisor, which has key to monitor. The software, it seems it's working and everything is in, in working order, so it wasn't what we, wasn't Y two K or.
Yeah, Y two K two point O did not happen last Friday. The stations did not blow up when the software.
But I assure people, the taxpayers, that we do have a contract with Real Term. They are responsible to make sure that the show goes on and if we have any glitches with the software, they are, are here. And if we have any glitches with the software, they are, are here to assist us. Going to the senior advisory committee. October eighth, we, the seniors actually visited Museum of the Hudson Highlands Education Center on the Boulevard, and they were given a lecture on animals of New York State. There were many seniors who have never been there before, and it was quite an enjoyable visit for them. Terms of friend, the friendly visitor program, oh, I'm sorry. Our next meeting is on October twenty-eighth. And we are gonna have a guest to, speaker to just talk about some occupational therapy resources that seniors can tap into, and as you age, you're, it's hard to move your hands. And this, this might be a potential service for seniors. The other thing is I'll go to the friendly visitor program again, this month again. We're, we're trending the same, we're, we have the same number of volunteers and services. We are now, the aggregate totals, we are now up to sixteen thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars in terms of services provided to our seniors, and that's with our ten thousand dollar investment for the year. So, it's, it's definitely a worthwhile investment. I think that was it. Oh, the Blue Creek, Intermodal Watershed, that was the other thing. Again, there was no meeting, I've been reaching out just to make sure. And then the last thing I'm gonna bring before the board is, next month, I'd like to bring the proposal, West Point Tours bus that you and I have discussed, to take the seniors to a holiday show down in Isard, Hauser Hall on December seventh, it's three P M. And I am going to be coordinating with Recreation Department.
Sure.
To sign the seniors up, but then we'll have to vote on that next month.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right, real quick on ambulance service, I mean, again, hundred percent, calls covered. Response times are good, in Cornwall roughly five minutes and fifty-five seconds. I do think, just to kind of just, I guess, bring this, you know, to the board's attention, you know, look, we've, we've had these discussions, as you know. They're kind of going through a little bit of like a flux as they kind of, you know, as they're like realigning to not making calls in, you know, in the town and city of Newburgh. And, you know, they're just like having to like realign how they're, basically how the budget is looking. And also in light of our contract expiring next year. So, there is gonna be some, some fluctuations. The call volume is down a little bit, but that's due to the fact that another municipality decided to go on their own, and so we lost that, that business, right? But we always knew that was gonna happen, and so we've adjusted. And I will say that, and the board knows this, that the key to this partnership being strong is that we have municipal funding from multiple municipalities. We have good leadership. And, you know, the alternative to this, and again, we've discussed this, is if we're not in this partnership, we're looking at either dealing with, you know, Empress or having to have our own municipal ambulance department. And the costs are two and three and four times what we're paying now. So, I think that, you know, just so the public is aware of this, you know, again, I think we have the best thing going in Orange County right now for the best price. And so, you know, obviously in the budget, we are gonna have to increase the cost of that contract. But again, the alternative is going to one million, one point five million a year for the same services. So, again, I think that we've done a good job, you know, working with New Windsor EMS on this. That's, that's New Windsor EMS, Cornwall EMS. The town of Cornwall Police Department, you know, again, just going through some of the monthly stats, nothing really sort of sticks out here. I mean, usual numbers, calls for service, eight hundred and four miles driven, six thousand three hundred and eighty-five total miles for the year, sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eight. Traffic and appearance tickets issued, six hundred, parking tickets issued, two. Motor vehicle accidents reported, twenty-seven, arrests made, five. Nine-one-one hang-ups, twelve alarms, residential and business, twenty-five. Ambulance requests, seventeen, animal complaints, six. Burglaries, one, criminal mischief, one, disabled vehicles, nine, domestic incidents, seven. Parking complaints, eight, suspicious vehicles, a person's aid, house checks, one, assist other agencies, seventeen. You know, nothing out of the ordinary there. Just a couple of things that I wanna update you all on. So, the, the, I did receive draft scopes and work plans for the rest of the New York Forward projects. I got that today. So, that is something that we're gonna have to dig into, because we are gonna have to finalize the draft scopes and budgets. Eventually, once those are finalized, we are gonna have to sign contracts for the rest of the New York Forward projects. But this is something that, you know, I think we're gonna ease our way into. We're gonna get through the budget first, and then we're gonna come back in November and start working on the draft scopes and work plans. But we do now have all the draft scopes and work plans for all of the, the New York Forward projects. So, you know, that is, you know, that is good news. They did meet their deadline, they told me that we'd have it, you know, shortly after Columbus Day, and we had it. So, I, I was happy to see that, not another delay. We've also started working with the village on the drinking water source protection plan. You may recall that we're working with a technical assistance provider that's paid for by D E C to basically come up with a plan that's gonna help protect the water aquifers that are out in Mountainville. And we had a kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're gonna have monthly meetings going forward. In fact, the next meeting is Friday at one o'clock.
When is it?
It's Friday at one, but this, this is basically, sorry.
It's the fourth Friday.
Yeah, sorry, it, it's Friday, October twenty-fifth at one. This is basically a, it's a small stakeholder group. D E C tells you who you have to have, so it's gotta be like a member of the planning board, a member of Conservation Advisory Committee, it's gotta be just a number of different, you know, folks. And then the village has appointments as well. And then we basically meet with the technical assistance provider, we come up with a plan. Again, this is, this is being led by the village because it's their water system. And so, they've invited us to participate, and ultimately, they would be the ones that would adopt the plan, and then they would ask us to adopt it as well. Mostly because, most of the way to protect the aquifers is the town would have to pass zoning because the aquifers are in Mountainville. So, you know, some of the stuff we're gonna be looking at is how do we make sure that we protect the aquifers of Mountain, you know, Mountainville from, you know, upstream development activity, from, you know, whatever. And so, those are just some things that we're kind of currently looking at as far as this is concerned.
Are there any board members that are on this, since we're the ones that are gonna be passing on this?
Yes, myself, so.
Oh.
So, there's members of each, so it is the mayor and the supervisor, and this is the D E C specified who should be on this. So, it's the supervisor and the mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's a member, it's a member of the planning board. It is a member of the Conservation Advisory Committee. And then the rest are basically, member of the water committee. So, Tim is on that, 'cause he's on, he's on the water committee.
Are you on there?
So, both of.
This is the first you can bring back up?
You're, you're on there. And then we have the Conservation Advisory Committee, and then the village has the rest of the appointments. Yeah, check, check your email, it's on your calendar, you can get in the calendar.
Oh, okay.
From the technical assistance provider, but basically. Yeah, so we're gonna be doing that, that's gonna go through until next May roughly. And then, once that is concluded, we come up with a plan, and then the village adopts it first, and then the town decides if it wants to adopt it next. But, I mean, the idea is that if both adopt it, we, you know, we come up with this strong plan. So, that is the Drinking Water Source Protection Committee. So, let me see, there's, there's that. And then obviously, look, just the budget. So, I mean, most of the focus is gonna be on the budget from now until November twentieth. That's, that's really, that's the biggest, you know, role the supervisor right now is getting the budget passed. So, that's where all my time's gonna go. Certainly, I would welcome, if any of you have questions for Pam and I, I mean, I know you have been, but just make sure that you continue to come and, you know, meet with me offline if you have questions about any of this. And so, I think that's it as far as my update on this. I guess let me get to public comments. Is there any public, yes?
About the U S building?
Oh, sure.
I talked to Truth Beats today, I was out, I had to be in New Windsor, talk to the medics. But, you know, they're gonna be hiring, with the Windsor's money, not the town's money. And actually hiring a contractor, Hudson Valley Power, listen, they could be power washing the whole building and maybe cleaning out all the gutters, pepping for the winter time, and we see all the gutters. So, they'll make up the base, so there's no hazards and stuff. But New Windsor's paying for all of that, according to him.
Yeah, 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 actually, yeah, Tommy and Michael briefed me on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's good that they're gonna be doing that, to clean up the building. Okay, so, let me see, wait. It looks like Councilmember Rocha Michael-Rozzy, she wants to report on one thing real quick.
There are two items that I wanna just briefly mention. Can you hear, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. Last Saturday, this is Youth Garden Club, members of Youth Garden Club infused Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council members gathered at the corner of Willow and Main Street, where the Brian White property is. And this, they were, I was supposed to be there, but I couldn't due my, due my back injury, but I did get the reports. They did, they did prepare and clean up the area.
Should I turn this down, or? It's going fine before. Uh, let me see. I'll try to turn mine down. Try it now. Yeah, you wanna try it this way, sorry.
Yeah. Turn that up, and I'll turn this down.
All right, Rocha, do you wanna talk this way and see if this works?
Sure.
Yeah?
Okay. I could hear myself echoing.
Yeah, better.
Anyhow, the collaboration work between Cornwall Youth Garden Club and Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council was successful, and there are three parts, three more Saturdays we're gonna be working, on the nineteen and the twenty-sixth to plant some annuals and pollinator pathway bushes in that corner, in that triangle. So, that's that. The other thing that I wanted to mention, which is quite important to me, is the Main Street Revitalization Committee, which I am the liaison, has requested to light the Main Street snowflakes on November twenty-ninth, which is right after Thanksgiving at five-thirty. And this is a very low-key event. It, the street can, doesn't have to be closed, and this is basically to kick off the, you know, holiday season with lights and the shopping of obviously coming the next day, which would be fantastic. So, it's a, they are preparing some refreshments, warm refreshments afterwards for the public, and also Ms. Hough and Ms. Hartman and the committee has been working on this project. So, they were requesting to have this day to light the snowflakes. Thank you.
Well, it sounds like we now have a, an alternate proposal, we have an alternate proposal for lighting over the snowflakes on the, on the twenty-ninth. So, I guess my question is gonna be, you know, you know.
I just think that we're already doing, like, can they work together on the thirtieth? Because we're already doing that activity, it was, I thought we just said.
Mrs. Scott, what is, what is the problem to having the snow lights on the twenty-ninth? Why can't that be on that day?
I don't, I don't, I guess.
The traffic circle is not gonna be closed, it's gonna be a very low-key, all the businesses are gonna be open, and this has never been done previously, so this is very, very special. I, quite frankly, myself, don't wanna mix it with another event. On the thirtieth, we have already two events, one in the shop and hop, and the one is the village. So, it's gonna be kind of like too overwhelming, if you ask me. Anyway, the committee has worked on this pretty extensively, so as a liaison, I, my job is to have their, arm their voice here.
Well, did you hear any of our discussion at all, when we were just?
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
Okay.
Because I, I didn't hear you make any comments, so I, I, I thought you were in agreement as we were talking.
Nope, I did, there was a condition. If you look, if you look at the video, it's, it says if it works out. So, and I didn't have time to, I didn't have a chance to report, so I was waiting for my turn to report.
I understand, I understand. You're in a difficult situation.
I think these can be really done, it's kind of like a really cute event, and it's a low-key, there's no street closure, no police officers have to be out there, and it's just gonna be really nice after Thanksgiving, people come out relaxing, and then right ne, the next day, beautifully decorated for Don's, you know, special event, beautiful event that it's shop and hop. So, I think two, the three events can coexist within twenty-four hours from each other.
I would, I would say that, that, that was more discussion around these. So, I guess what I would say is, one, whichever event, to me, I wanna make sure that as many board members are able to attend. So, you know, I myself, I cannot attend on, you know, this is a busy weekend, it's like the day after Thanksgiving. I'm not able to be there to light the snowflakes on that Friday because I have other.
We also think it's Black Friday, I'm forgetting that.
You know, so, so again, I guess, I guess we have to sort of, there's a lot of people to kind of consider here. So, the question is, I think we wanna make sure that, what's that?
I can be there.
I mean.
I can be there on Saturday.
I don't think all four members of the board or five members of the town council have to be there for the light. I mean, we have so many other ceremonies coming up that not all five of us are gonna be present, so.
I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get into the spirit of the holidays, maybe as a community. So, I think that's why we were looking to see as many of us could attend as possible. So, that's why.
Yes, but Mrs. Scott, if you notice, the Village Lightning is the, the thirtieth, which is kind of like if anybody could change it, maybe they wanted to change. So, I think it's just too many events in one day. So, and this is their request, they've done a lot of work, and I think it's, 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 to me, it makes sense to have it on the twenty-ninth.
Well, for that reason, I can see why they want it to be separate, because they have done a lot of work to get here, but.
Yes.
I'll show, to whatever, I'll be there. Tell me what to wear.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be there also.
Don, you have something to say?
I just wanted to point out that both Bobby and I mean are members of the Full on Hudson Special Events Committee that planned the tree lighting for the same time as the shop small event. So, they created this conflict themselves. So, they may have put a lot of work into this, but they also created the conflict themselves.
It can't be two places at once.
Yes. So, they are the members of the Main Street Committee, that is why they do not wanna do it on the thirtieth. It has nothing to do with them wanting to do it on the twenty-ninth for whatever reason. It's because they created the conflict of the tree lighting.
Thank you for sharing that information.
You know, like I said originally about the lights, again, I believe we're still talking about the lights, but we are, we're gonna get them up, we're gonna make sure they're gonna work, and then the supervisor's gonna decide when the lights are gonna be lit, and that's how it's gonna happen.
I just wanna bring out a point of safety, if I could?
Yeah.
Okay. The thirtieth, if we're already having the road closed, I know people are gonna be standing out in the middle of the road, gazing at the lights. So, at least they'll be doing it in the safety of not having vehicular traffic coming and people taking selfies. I'm just thinking of all these things. The road is already closed, and that, that's the other thing I'm thinking of.
It sounds like the supervisor is gonna continue to speak to you.
Okay, that's fine, maybe he can work out.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, you know, work out, you know. Okay. Is there anything else, or any board members, before I move to public comments?
Could I just ask?
Yes.
A thank you? Okay.
Oh, sure.
We, the board voted to hire Steve Cornelius as the substitute bus driver for the seniors, and they absolutely love him, and he has the right temperament, and he really is feeling it need because without him, if our bus driver is out, they have no transportation. So, I really thank the board and Mr. Cornelius for stepping up and doing this for the seniors of our community. That's it. Good news.
Yep, that is, that is excellent news.
It is, it's a good thing.
That is excellent news. That is excellent news. Okay, moving on, um, is there any public comments before we go to executive session? Yes?
Christine Halverson Baldwin, Angola, I would just like to answer the board for a status update on Treetop Warehouses, what's going on with that?
Okay, so what I could say on that is, um, again, I, I keep getting asked questions from members of the public about the status on Treetop Warehouse and essentially the next move of Treetop Warehouses is on them because we're now in the phase of, of, of the secret process where, uh, their next move is whether or not they're going to respond to what the planning board has given back to them and, um, and if they do that, then we would start getting into the, uh, we're currently, we had the public hearing on the draft environmental impact statement, but we need their response before we can start getting into the final EIS and so, next move is on them. And people keep asking me, is there a clock ticking? I can't believe there's not a clock ticking, but there's not a clock ticking. It's entirely contingent upon the applicant as to whether or not they wanna continue or whether or not they wanna, you know, they could just sit and wait for a little bit, um, are they gonna respond, right, Steve?
That's absolutely right. It's up to them to come up with responses, there's no time limit for them to submit responses. Right now, the project's kinda in limbo.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yes?
Uh, Drew, in hand, Claire, I mean, I'm just looking to see the status of the appraisers for the USDA buyout program.
So I have, I have found three appraisers to get quotes from. We've sent that, we've asked, I've not gotten quotes back from three appraisers, so I didn't have anything for the board to consider, but we do have to consider three because it's over a certain-
It's procurement policy.
Yeah, it's procurement policy, yeah, so just, yeah, so, so we're working on it. We at least got, we found the firms, we, uh, we sent out, I haven't gotten enough quotes back to consider. If we have to call a special meeting to put one of these in place because there's a, yeah.
I'm sorry, gosh, I need to turn it off.
Yeah, if you can.
Um, there's another issue in terms of what the basis of the, uh, appraisals will be. And it doesn't preclude hiring an appraiser, but before the appraisals are done, the town has to decide if it's gonna be pre-event or post-event. I've been working with USDA, I'd hope to have a memo for this meeting and, uh, I just haven't had them get back. I'm not blaming them, I'm just saying that's what happened. So, um, the board's gonna have to consider what basis the appraisals will be done on before they put those out. But it's moving forward and I'm, I'm sure probably November, be in a position to-
Yeah, I mean, if we happen, and we may have to come back to have a special meeting on a couple of other, you know, issues to possibly award contracts for the Hasbrook Drainage Project or other things and if we have, you know, if I'm able to get quotes back, we could certainly tack that on to a special meeting later this month. But more likely, this will be on for the November twelfth meeting or maybe we stick it on the, you know, on like a meeting we have to have on the budget on November seventh. But I mean, one way or the other, um, by the middle of November, we'll have this, you know, in place.
And, and this will be, uh, also going to-
Yeah. Of course, yes.
I wanted to, uh, recognize Katie Stone Wallace, who is both on the, um, Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council and on the Cornwall Youth Garden Club. She has, uh, played a big role in organizing the pollinator planting at, uh, Brian Spike. And, um, and then I also wanted to thank, of course, the board for, uh, voting in favor of supplying, uh, for the grant and will do our very best to, um, to write a successful grant. Thank you.
Excellent. Is there any further public comments? Yes.
I'm also Cameron from Duncan Avenue on Cornwall on Hudson. And Supervisor Wojciechowski, I'm going to ask you to represent the board as I ask you a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, do you know what month this is?
It's October.
Okay, do you know the season?
It's the fall.
Bear with me, yeah. Um, do you know the year?
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Do you know how long it's been since twenty twenty-three?
Uh, it's been ten months, almost eleven, yes.
Okay, give or take a year.
Yes.
When was the last time that you, Tim, or any board member was over at Sans Ring Homestead?
Uh, I would say that- Yeah, you were there three weeks ago and I know that Mrs. Scott pointed out there was, um, some rot on the building. We had to patch it up, so I know that got pointed out and, and we've also been working with, um-
We did a walkthrough with John Beers.
Yeah, there was a walkthrough with John Beers.
There's a big project going on.
When, when was your walk out, the walkthrough with John?
June.
June.
June, okay, that, that was the beginning of spring, beginning of summer and we're at the end of, we're good in, to the middle of fall.
Sure.
So, um, I understand that last year there was fifteen thousand dollars in the budget. This year, there's fifteen thousand dollars in the budget. I, I drive past often and I look over, I see nobody. Um, another question is, do you know, as I personally know, that there are termites in the village all the way up to Oak Street in the town and into New Windsor?
Um, no, I-
So, from my personal information, I have some pictures for you.
Oh, okay.
Um, Mr. Gold, if you would assist me, I have each side and Mr. Wojciechowski. The front pictures I have for you are from my personal, it was a, a surprise attack from my, they each got one to look at.
Okay.
Um, of termites in our own house.
Sure, it's not a problem.
It's quite all right, really.
So, as you can see on page one, the eating away of the wood that we experienced in our house that had to be replaced.
Oh, okay.
Um, on the back, you will see twenty, twenty, ours, we had that situation in twenty twenty-two. I have friends that at the same time had had some termites. Um, they are increasing in the area due to the warming, unfortunately. Um, on the back, you will see pictures of the kitchen area of Sans Ring Homestead in twenty twenty-three. And that's the area that, and I thank, um, Ms. Scott and Buildings and Grounds for at least covering that hole. Um, now we come to September twenty twenty-four and the front pictures are what I kept watching all season long and the back has some close-ups. Again, if you would do me a favor.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
I'll start over here. Still feel better.
I don't hear much talk about Sans Ring and I know that there are some people that perhaps, uh, we hear that they don't like it. They love it. They love, uh, coming back to Sans Ring Homestead when it's open. They love sharing their experience with their own children and we believe, and, and they bring back, uh, the- we bring alive the fourth grade curriculum as well as significant history of Cornwall and the area. So that deteriorating wood in our situation and with Sans Ring, that can't be covered up and ignored. That has to be removed and new wood replacing for the integrity of the structure. We had to do that, the town is going to have to do it. As you can see, the deterioration in one year was extreme. There, the little holes in twenty twenty-three were observable. It became a whole section that was open. I went in a couple of weeks ago to, my concern was the kitchen with the holes from the outside. And I could not open the door between the parlor and the kitchen to get inside. Are there raccoons? Are there mice? Are there birds? I mean, who, what, when possibly got into that kitchen through those obvious holes? So with that deterioration in one year, I can't imagine what might happen in the next year. I'd also like to recommend a pest control. I know in our basement, there was evidence of, um, termites. By the way, we didn't see the termites, it was all of a sudden we moved something and there were holes. And the rest is history, but down in the basement, over in the black, uh, the dark side of the basement, there are all these casings that hang and that is a representation of termites. I know much more about termites than I ever wanted to know. So I do recommend that pest control get into the basement with Buildings and Grounds and see if in fact that deterioration is water or termites or what we are actually dealing with. So, I represent the trustees who care about the building. I represent the friends who feel handcuffed to get the fourth grade program going. It's been so rewarding and exciting of a program for years and years and years and years. And lately, our students have missed out, they've been deprived of a rich experience. Please address my questions, please save our treasure, that's all I ask.
Yeah, I was, you know, just real quick, I mean, you know, Tommy, we should, um-
Well, I mean, just, I've never been reached out to once, I mean, if you've really been monitoring to the building for one year, you've never picked up the phone, called or said, this is what I'm observing, so that strikes me as, as odd, um.
I'm not the town, I'm not in control of the building, Tommy. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
I'm saying, if you're noticing something, though, why wouldn't, why, why wouldn't you reach out to me? I would have addressed you. That being said, we have, we have been in extensive, uh, through that building with John Beers, we've turned every leaf inside that building. We have a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work. John Beers did note that there was old termite damage. I'm not sure what you're referring to is the old kitchen where the fireplace is or the new kitchen where the-
The, the addition, the new one, the one on the far-
So underneath that, he did say there was old termite damage and it's part of his hundred and fifty, which now is three hundred thousand, I believe, or two hundred thousand.
No, 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 no.
But part of that is to get in there and get that wood replaced.
Some, yes, uh.
So it's something that we are well aware about, there's the wonderful, again, this is a, another Albany thing. This was money that's been handed down from Albany, we are waiting on them.
But isn't that passing, I mean, my question is, isn't that passing, passing the buck? We have fifteen thousand dollars from last year hasn't been spent, fifteen thousand dollars from this year hasn't been spent. We're almost into twenty twenty-five.
There, there was a, a handful of thousands of dollars spent there last year redoing a window in the upstairs that was leaking.
Yes, and thank you.
But just because the, there's, that, I didn't code it to that, there was other places where the money could have came out of, like Buildings and Grounds or, or, I generally don't touch Sans Ring's money. In seven years, I don't think I've spent a dollar out of that budget.
Oh, that's splendid.
Uh, also, uh, uh, it's funny, you know, that we were working tirelessly on this project for Sans Ring for quite a few months and, you know, it got to the point where prevailing wages got robust. It's one hoop after another hoop that we have to go through and I think we're at the end of the tunnel. And what I'm talking about is that we're hopefully potentially we're gonna have a start date of actually renovating Sans Ring building, hopefully in November, and then you can see a lot of work, to the point where all that stuff's gonna get replaced, that you just won't throw that, you know, uh, everything's gonna be, like, replaced. And then, and then we're gonna be able to open it back up to the public and hopefully get the fourth graders back in there and start that program back up. That's kind of the, the long goal for Sans Ring and, you know, so we're very, very, you know, on top of this issue that, you know, presented to us and it's not being forgotten by, by this board, but not one, not one second.
I mean, if you, if, if you recall, we, we awarded a contract by now two or more months ago.
Yes.
But then it turned out that there was gonna be prevailing wage requirements and so we had to go back and the contractor had to go back and recalculate the project based on prevailing wage requirements. Would have started by now, but we had this requirement because it's, it's, it's day funding and also because we're a municipality and we have to-
We're getting grant money.
Yeah, we're getting grant money. So we have a, a very extensive project that's planned and we didn't wanna do this piecemeal. It just made sense to, so the fifteen thousand we put in there every year, that's kind of, uh, what I would almost say is contingency if we need to have more money to tack on to this grant funds we got, we were kind of-
Contractor says he can start the first week in November.
So our plan right now is, once we get all this sort of like, um, worked out and we believe, this is why I was saying, have a special meeting in the next week or two to, um, go back and to reauthorize an amended quote for the contract to recognize the prevailing wage costs that are on there now. So the goal is to, to come back, pass that and, and still have John Beers start in November. And then it, it was what, a four to six month project?
Yeah, about four months.
For completion and, and I know the schools don't go in there until the spring.
Right.
Typically. So our goal would be to have it open for them to be able to go in the spring before the school year is out. But I mean, certainly, I definitely think it makes sense to, you know, I don't know, do we have Hollenbeck just take a look at this?
But, well, I don't know about that because a lot of these pieces here, this stuff's getting, it's getting torn out and replaced with new.
It needs to be-
No, it's gone to him. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty extensive project that we're talking about.
I know that.
So, you know, so, uh, it's not being forgotten. It's, it's actually, it's basically full steam headed, it has been a, a lot of work over many months to, to, to get as far as we got so far today and really hoping to have that potential to start date in November.
It just seems like you're, you're looking to hear a timeline and where we're going.
That something's actually being done, I mean-
Yeah, because you're not saying that.
Yeah, and when, as I saw that hole and then really wondering what could be in the kitchen and what's happened to the kitchen. I mean, there's just all those things. The new kitchen.
I thought you meant the kitchen in the, the old, the whole of the old kitchen.
No, it's the one we-
That was water intrusion, not termite water, that has since been boarded up. Another thing John Beers will be fixing.
Excellent, thank you.
No, but thank you for certainly pointing, I mean, I, I wouldn't have even thought that there would be termites there, but it certainly seems like it's possible and it's certainly something we have to guard for the future. So we're gonna probably have to check the building out periodically, I think.
John Beers, John Beers' initial report, when he first wrote us that three-page report and what he thought needs to be fixed, there was listed, um, prior termite damage in, in numerous rafters, numerous support beams and that's why that whole section is being lifted and-
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think the surprise was because I remember all summer, um, when we cleared out the brush and everything, I, that wasn't gone and then when I received the picture, I was like, wha- what, what happened? So thank you for, for sealing it up, I appreciate it and, uh-
Absolutely, please keep the critters out.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you for your quick reaction.
Okay, is there any further public con, yes?
Couple things, just, first of all, as a resident, I don't have a vote on the board, but as a resident, I vote for the lighting of the, the snowflakes on November thirty, or, yeah, November thirty. I, I mean, you know, you guys have got other activities going, you've got the street closed down, it just makes sense. People are gonna be there, that's the time to light them. But moving on to a more important issue, I know you spent a lot of time on the snowflakes, but there's one thing that concerns me and that is on the November ballot that's three weeks away from today. It's rare that the town of Cornwall has a proposition on the ballot. We have two this year. One is for the town clerk, term of office, two years to four years. But even more important, there's one about putting term limits on town board members and supervisor. I, I don't have any other municipal that has term limits for local government. I mean, sometimes we all sit back and we'd love to see term limits in Albany, in federal level in Washington. I mean, that's where the money and the power is. But having served there where you are for twenty six years, I know there's no money or power. So let the people decide when they go to the polls, if they want to give somebody twelve years, they want to give somebody fifteen years or twenty years. It's up to them. But my whole point tonight to stand up is, you put it on a, I think you voted on in July and you had it be out to the Board of Elections by August something. I'll guarantee you that ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the public doesn't even know those propositions are on the ballot. There's been no information from the town that we're having, you know, a proposition on limiting a, a resident from serving on the town board to X number of years. I mean, wouldn't it be nice to really put some information, not taking one side or the other, but to just put the word out there and say, there's a proposition. This is a big deal to, to limit elected officials on how long they can serve. I, I mean, I served twenty six years. I know town council people have served more than twelve years and I'd like to think we all contribute to some to the community. So this is a big deal. It's going to be in the hands of the voter. They're going to pass it or they're going to reject it, but the town has not said a word since you notified probably the Board of Elections to put the proposition on the ballot. So do whatever you can in the next three weeks. So at least let the voters, there's nine thousand voters in the town.
Oh, sure.
At least let them know that there's a proposition about term limits on the ballot.
So what I was going to say is that, as we all know, I think if we had put this out months before or even weeks before, there's a timeframe when people start paying attention to this stuff. So I don't know that, you know, and there, there has been stuff posted on it. There has been, it's been in the local, there, there was a public hearing on it, but in my mind, it makes sense to put this out, you know, a month to three weeks to a few weeks before because again, I don't think that people are going to be paying attention to this, you know, cutting through all the noise of the presidential election until they really start to. So certainly before early voting, I think information has to come out and there is plan to get information out. But I, I just didn't think it was, you know, the time to do it was not months ago. It's like now as people are starting to think about. So yes, we are going to put information. Is there any further public comment from anyone, from the cadets, from the instructor, from, I hope you guys saw, you know, this was a pretty jam packed meeting tonight. I hope we all, you know, behaved tonight, did a good job showing our best that we can to the, but, you know, again, I mean, this is the closest level of government to, you know, to taxpayers, to voters, et cetera. So there's a lot of stuff that we, you know, touch upon. My meetings tend to go long. I know the board doesn't like that, but, you know, again, we have a lot of stuff to talk about every week. If there's no other public comment, then I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss disciplinary actions against a town employee.
Mr. Bardi. Ms. Scott. Ms. Allen Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Otsi.
Yes.
Mr. Ward Housk.
Yes.